The opening prayer will be given by the Vice Mayor, Angela Williams, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all the blessings and opportunities it has brought us. Thank you for the abundance of blessings you have bestowed upon this great city. Father, we pray that you would continue to bless our city, bless every resident who resides within its boundaries, and every employee who works to make it great. As the children and young people in our city return to school, cover them, put a hedge of protection around them, and keep them safe from all harm. Bless this council and our city manager as we labor in the calling of public service. Give us wisdom, compassion, and love to serve our people, and let all we do glorify you. These and all other blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru? Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigle?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Winn?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Clerk will please read the resolution for the closed meeting.
A resolution certifying a closed meeting of the Council of the City of Norfolk held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act to adopt the resolution. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chambers. Thanks for coming out tonight. The process which we will follow for tonight's meeting is the first thing we're going to do is take up the public hearings. At the conclusion of all the public hearings, we have a number of them. We will then move to the regular agenda items, and then, once we've finished, we'll vote on all of those in just the way they are numbered on the printed docket. At the conclusion of the regular agenda, we will hear from any member of the public who would like to address the City Council on non-agenda items, and we have, several of you have elected to do that. In order to have your name called, all you have to do is sign a slip of paper, which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began. So, we do have one really special ceremonial matter before the meeting begins, and Kurt Hoflick here from Norfolk General Hospital, the administrator here, is about to make, would like to make a presentation about the United Way. Kurt, it's good to see you. Thanks for coming down tonight.
Glad to be here.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, my name is Kurt Hoflick, a United Way volunteer and member of the United Way of Southampton Roads Chairman's Cabinet for key corporate and city campaigns. It's an honor to be here this evening to thank you, the City Manager, Mr. Jones, all the city staff, and the City of Norfolk employees for your support of our community through your participation in United Way. As a community, we depend on you to keep us safe, to give us places to play and recreate, to create an environment to grow our businesses, and to provide education for our children, and I could go on. When we have an issue, we often turn to you for your help and support. Today, we are here to thank you for your generous support of the United Way. Last year, the City of Norfolk employees raised nearly $155,000 through the United Way campaign, and over the last five years, the City of Norfolk employees raised nearly $800,000 for our community. You joined others in Southampton Roads to make good things happen right here in Norfolk, and here's a little bit about what's happening in Norfolk. Eight children and families receive school tutoring, childcare, and programs to reinforce positive behaviors in our city's youth. Thirty-one thousand nine hundred ninety-seven neighbors were rescued during times of emergency such as abuse and homelessness. Four point one million meals, that's million meals, were distributed to the hungry in Norfolk. Four hundred and thirty-seven, four thousand three hundred and seventy-nine disabled and elderly received health service, education, and support. So, on behalf of a grateful community, we'd like to present you with this plaque and a heartfelt thank you for your generosity. I'll note that on this plaque is artwork provided by children who participated in the new United for Children summer education programs in our young terrace Norfolk neighborhoods this summer. This is one very visible United Way collective community impact program demonstrating outstanding summer achievement results in academic advancements among our city's most at-risk youth. This is really just one example of where your generous support assists the city and it's very a line-of-sight program. And for that, just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the United Way.
Great. Kurt, thank you. Thank you for coming down. Thanks for that important message. The council's honored to accept this on behalf of all of the employees of the city. I want to thank them, manager, for his, you know, for certainly his leadership in this regard as well, and thanks, of course, to the United Way for the great service they provide to all of our citizens, and specifically you, Kurt, and everything you do. And I thank you for being a part of our poverty commission, as well as the great work you're doing at the hospital. It's okay. So, thanks very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.[416.31][416.31](applause) Okay, that concludes the ceremonial matter we had this evening, so we'll move directly to public hearing one, please.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day on the application of Norfolk Collegiate School to amend the city's future land use map within the general plan from single-family traditional to institutional, and for a change of zoning from single-family to institutional district on property located at 7307 through 7321 Woodfin Avenue. By six-year vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right. Chappelle Watkins-White is here to answer questions if we have any. They can call the roll.
I have two ordinances. The first is an ordinance to amend the city's general plan so as to change the land use designation for properties located at 7307 to 7321 Woodfin Avenue from single-family traditional to institutional. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Can I address this?
Sure.
Just two issues that I think are very important here. First of all, the way that Norfolk Collegiate handled the matter with the neighborhood. If we had, we had received from the suburban parks, suburban acres, Civic League their flyer, and Chappelle White did a great job. She's counsel for the school. I think she's on the Board of Trustees, did a great job in going to the neighborhood, working with the neighborhood, and having the neighborhood vested in the collegiate's project, collegiate having been there now seventy-five years or so in the neighborhood. Also, the second aspect is, is what is actually occurring there. Again, coming back to part of the Renaissance of Ward's Corner, Norfolk Collegiate has played a huge role in the Renaissance of Ward's Corner, and again, this will be another step. Collegiate, what we're seeking to do is, is what we're being asked to do is, and what Collegiate is requesting of us, is to place two parallel, the fields, we have fields that are currently there, or that we know of that are there, and that Collegiate is asking that we, that they turn them into turf, and then, that they be lit, to have those lit into the evenings, which, again, carry the level of athletics to a, would perceive to be another level, allowing for later start times, times, allowing for field hockey to play on a turf field instead of grass. So, it's a significant aspect. What makes it even more significant is it's, from what I understand, the only school in the state that is doing this to their athletic, to raise their athletic program to the level that it is, to have two side-by-side lit turf fields. So, again, it adds to living within the city of Norfolk as Norfolk Christian has done in that area. I think Norfolk Collegiate is doing the same. So, Chappelle, you've done a great job, and it's almost a textbook on how to handle dealing with neighborhoods and how to make things happen. So, thank you, and I vote aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing two, please.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day on the application of Overbrook Ventures LLC for a change of zoning from R8 to conditional R9 on property located at 2817 through 2821 Overbrook Avenue, and by one-five vote, Planning Commission recommends denial.
Bobby Feynman, please. There were two members of the public who signed up to address the council on this matter. Bobby, if you'll just give us your full name and your present, I'm going to address.
Good evening. Bobby Feynman, 2617 All Saints Court in Virginia Beach. Good evening. Please forgive my attire. I'm the head football coach at Ruffner Middle School, and I came straight from practice to be here tonight, and I didn't have time to change.
All right.
Hopefully, I will be back here in a few months with my team so they can be recognized as champions of the Norfolk Portsmouth Middle School Football League. I'm here tonight seeking your approval for a zoning change at 2821 Overbrook Avenue from R8 single-family to R9 single-family. I've been working very closely with the Estabrook Civic League, and I'm happy to say that they firmly and unanimously support this project. They support it because they want to keep Estabrook a great place to work, live, and play, and they want a safer neighborhood. They are, they are wanting increased homeownership, and they want to reduce functional obsolescence. And we've worked very closely with them, and I hope that you will also vote in favor of this as they want it. So, thank you for your consideration. I'm standing by.
Bobby.
Good afternoon, Mayor Frame, and members of the council. My name is William D. Jackson, Sr. I live at 3709 Buckingham Street in Norfolk, in the Estabrook section of the city. I am the treasurer of the Estabrook Civic League. I'm here today to speak for the members of my civic league in favor of the rezoning of the property at 2817 and 2821 Overbrook Avenue from R8 single-family to R9 single-family conditional. Our members feel the rezoning of this property, as well as maybe others in our neighborhood, would be a good thing for the growth of Estabrook. They directed the president of the civic league to send a letter of that fact to the Norfolk City Planning Commission, or Planning Department, which she did. She also requested that I speak to the Planning Commission hearing to further emphasize that support. I am here tonight to emphasize that support again to the Norfolk City Council. We think it'd be a good thing for Estabrook. We may be back later on, on a per-case basis, to ask for more changes such as this one. I appreciate your contention. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the list of folks who have signed up to speak. Any comments?
Yeah. I'd like to know what Planning Commissioner voted for it. It was, what, six to?
Five to one.
Five to one, I think.
One to five.
One to one to five, yeah.
Yeah. And the reason for voting against it? Is it Joy here? Lenny?
It was had to do with the general plan.
Against the general plan.
Okay. How you doing?
Good to see you. Mr. Mayor, council, the Planning Commission supported a recommendation from staff to deny this, and that was based on an analysis of the lot sizes in the neighborhood. It is basic math. We looked at the neighborhood. There are a little bit over 300 lots. Two hundred and fifty-five of those are larger than 50 feet. Forty-three of those are less than 50 feet. Mr. Feynman's lots are proposed to be 43 feet wide. If you look on the street that it's proposed to go on, it's the same ratio of conforming lots to those that are smaller. The one vote in favor from the Planning Commission felt that, as the neighborhood did, that new homes in the community was a plus, but that was the gist of the vote.
I'm looking at the, a diagram, and it's, this yellow, this diagram's in yellow, and it has a star in the middle of it, but it looks like the lot is divided disproportionately.
Well, it will be re-divided should this be approved and split down the middle.
Right down the middle.
There's currently one house that's just been, I think it's just been finished, on the north side of this property, but that line would be moved to split that lot. That lot's 86 feet wide.
It'd be 240.
And if this is approved, he will divide it down the middle.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Just before I vote two, Marcus, maybe at our retreat, we might want to have maybe the planning director there, as well as the chair of the committee, because there's going to be more of these coming. It seems that the staff has reorganized, that they are sticking with the general plan, and there's a lot of recommendations to deny things, but there's also some mixed things that happen, such as this one, where a community is saying that they support it, and then there are other cases where the Planning Commission will vote for something and say they support it because the community wants it. So, maybe we need to have a better understanding of where staff and the Planning Commission are coming from with this, because we're going to be dealing with more of these, and, you know, it's always been my understanding that the general plan is meant to be changed as we deal with these things on a case-by-case basis, but we do seek staff's recommendation on this, and they're coming to us saying no, and now the Planning Commission's saying no, but we're getting mixed things on different, different areas, and this, to me, seems like an easy one. If the community said they wanted it, then the recommendation should have been supporting it, not against it. So, maybe it's a topic at our retreat.
Yeah. There are a lot of homes and a lot of lots in the city that are, that are in lots smaller than, anyway.
Yeah.
Three foot. So, okay. Call the roll.
I have an ordinance to rezon property located at 2817 and 2821 Overbrook Avenue from R8 single-family to conditional R9 single-family. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
I'm going to vote aye, but it troubles me to vote opposite of the Planning Commission, but I vote aye on this particular one, since the community's in favor of it, and it looks like everybody else is.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
I'm going to vote in favor of this, too, but I think that we did this general plan for a reason. We didn't do it because we expected exceptions, and I'm always troubled by, I get it, that you want more homes and you want to fill a lot, but if you don't do it right to start with, then you're filled with a lot of lots that don't conform, and then we go back to the same problems we have with housing and neighborhoods that aren't built to the quality that this general plan envisioned. So, I'm troubled with this. I think the neighbors are all well-intentioned, but at some point, we've got to step back and figure out that you either do it right the first time, or then you're stuck with it. So, I'll vote aye.
Ms. Williams?
I'm voting aye, but I think our general plan is just that, I think it's general, and I think you make a good point, Tommy, in that we do hear mixed reviews, and when we have special exceptions, they are just that, they're, they're exceptions, or when things come to us, we do have to look at them on a, on a case-by-case basis, because our city is not cookie cutter, is anything but cookie cutter, and our lots and our homes are not cookie cutter. So, we have unique situations, and we have unique lot sizes and home sizes and things of that nature, and I think new construction now is of a better quality than it was years ago when we're dealing with some of the things. I do, I think, you know, new construction-
I'm saying like 60s years ago. She's saying like 10 years ago.
Yeah, 10 years ago, or even, you know, some of the other things, but I think that the general plan is just that, it's general, it's a roadmap, but there needs to be some leniency and some, some leeway for us to make changes, and I think this goes to that. So, I vote aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing three, please.
Public hearing three scheduled for this day on the application of Norfolk Premium Outlets to amend the city's general plan to add Section 11-54 to the zoning ordinance to create Norfolk Premium Outlets Localized Alternative Sign Overlay District, and for a change of zoning from open space preservation to light industrial to retail center, and Norfolk Premium Outlets Localized Alternative Sign Overlay Districts on property located at 6282 North Hampton Boulevard. By six-year vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right. Mr. Richardson is here on behalf of the applicant, as is Randy Royal. If you, we may have some questions for you later. There are two other members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue.
Good evening, Mayor Frame, and members of the City Council, again. I am William D. Jackson, Sr. I live at 3709 Buckingham Street in Norfolk, in the Estabrook section of Norfolk. I'm here today to speak to the members of the City, oh, wrong one.[1231.83][1231.83](laughing) That's the right one. I'm sorry. I'm here today to speak out against the destruction of the Lake Wright Golf Course and the rezoning of the property from open space preservation and 1-2 light industrial districts to retail, C3 retail center. My main concern here is the word preservation. I think it would be a shame for the Norfolk City Council to approve the rezoning of that property and allow for the destruction of a great golf course that served this city for 50 years, and for what, another shopping mall? I might add that a large number of those citizens that play golf out there at that golf course are senior citizens that may not be able to pay $36 plus for a round of golf, for a round of 18 holes, when they could get an associate's membership at that golf course and play for $19, including the card. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Frame, members of City Council, City Manager Jones, City Attorney Pishko. Edna Riddick, 5500 Sandpiper Lane. I am a resident there. I own property at 5868 North Hampton Boulevard where my mother lives, which is directly beside the golf course. I came here on July 22 to address my concerns about the golf course, well, about the golf course and the Lake Wright Outlet Mall, the Outlet Mall and Lake Wright. My concern now is we have seen the beginning of problems on North Hampton Boulevard. My concern is, right now, the grass isn't cut on the golf course. Today, I noticed someone did come along North Hampton Boulevard, cut the grass. In the city of Norfolk, there is a ruling or a code that the grass at 12 inches needs to be cut, and city codes comes out and enforces residents to cut their grass. I'd like to know if that same ordinance or that same code will be enforced with the Lake Wright Golf Course. We have mosquitoes. The area right now is being inundated with mosquitoes and concerns about mosquitoes. Once the construction starts, we're going to have problems with rodents, but my biggest concern now is to think that you can ride down North Hampton Boulevard and look to the right, and you see the beautiful pristine golf course that was once there, and now you see weeds, grass, and no one has even attempted to try to do anything with it. My concern is for the residents who are right beside the golf course, if you could treat the golf course, especially that, I guess it's what, the buffer area that Simon is proposing.
Right.
Treat that with mosquito control, cut the grass, and keep the grass cut on North Hampton Boulevard. I know I can't stop the Outlet Mall, but I certainly can fight.
Right.
For having the grass cut and mosquito control.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Manager, that was a- You're there. Absolutely. Okay. All right. Any other questions for anyone? Or you can call the roll, please.
I have three ordinances for this, Mr. President. The first is an ordinance to amend Chapter 11 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Norfolk 1992 so as to create the Norfolk Premium Outlets Localized Alternative Sign Overlay District. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
The second is an ordinance to amend the city's general plan so as to change the land use designation on properties located at 6282 North Hampton Boulevard from office and open space recreational to commercial. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Public hearing number four, please.
Public hearing four scheduled for this day on the application of Centerra Healthcare for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to add Section 11-55 to create the Centerra Lee Localized Alternative Sign Overlay District, and for a change of zoning to adopt the Centerra Lee Lasso District on property located at 844-880 and 890 Kempsville Road and 6241 East Virginia Beach Boulevard. By six-year vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right. And Mr. Scott Campbell is here to answer questions, as is Eric Young from, from Lee for the hospital. All right, call the roll.
I have two ordinances for this. The first is an ordinance to amend Chapter 11 of the zoning ordinance so as to create the Centerra Lee Localized Alternative Sign Overlay District. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing five, please.
Public hearing five scheduled for this day on the application of Scott B. Konikoff for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of an 18-foot lane on the south side of East Oceanview Avenue, 150 feet more or less in length, lying east of Capeview Avenue and east of Lot 10 and Block 11 of the plat of part of property of Bayview Beach Corporation. By six-year vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
You can call the roll.
I have an ordinance closing, vacating, discontinuing, and unnamed 18-foot lane east of Capeview Avenue authorizing the conveyance to the abutting property owners of any interest the city may have in the underlying fee of said unnamed 18-foot lane contingent upon satisfaction of certain conditions. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing six.
Public hearing six scheduled for this day on the application of the Planning Commission for a text amendment to Section 10-16 Granby Monticello Quarter Mixed Use of the city's zoning ordinance to add and amend terms, simplify language, adjust development standards, and consider historic properties, and they recommend it by six-year vote. And I have an ordinance to amend Section 10-16 of the zoning ordinance so as to simplify language, adjust regulations, and development standards, and better accommodate existing historic buildings in the Granby Monticello Quarter Mixed Use District. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley? The second is an ordinance to amend Section 10-16 of the zoning ordinance so as to simplify language, adjust regulations, and development standards, and better accommodate existing historic buildings in the Grandby-Monticello Quarter Mixed Use District, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Webly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Are we ready for our one? All right, our one.
An ordinance granting a special exception to V-Wars, Inc., authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment named Cafe Affairs on property located at 333 West 21st Street, Suite 333. Commission recommends approval by six-year vote.
Great. And Marlene Murphy is here to answer questions, if anyone has any. Okay, you can call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Webly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Our two, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to Cal Clark, Inc., authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment named Harbor Inn on property located at 7924 Chesapeake Boulevard, Suite F. Planning Commission recommends approval by six-year vote.
Okay. We have a bunch of folks who are down here this evening to speak on this matter. There are at least 12 folks who have signed up to speak. They are all proponents. We don't have anybody here who is, like the Planning Commission, is here to take the issue on. There are another dozen who are also here who signed up to indicate their support, but they are proponents but don't wish to speak. So unless somebody really has a burning desire to get to the microphone, I think we're ready to go. I think so. All right. Council, have any questions? Mr. Jones, you're okay? We can move ahead. Okay. You can call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Webly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Public hearing number four, please.
Public hearing four scheduled for this day on the application of Centerra Healthcare for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to add Section 11-55 to create the Centerra Lee Localized Alternative Sign Overlay District and for a change of zoning to adopt the Centerra Lee Lasso District on property located at 844-880 and 890 Kempsville Road and 6241 East Virginia Beach Boulevard by six-year vote. Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right, and Mr. Scott Campbell is here to answer questions, as is Eric Young from Lee, for the hospital. All right, call the roll.
I have two ordinances for this. The first is an ordinance to amend Chapter 11 of the zoning ordinance so as to create the Centerra Lee Localized Alternative Sign Overlay District, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Webly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
An ordinance accepting a $539,441 Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Environmental Quality Stormwater Local Assistance Fund grant for the design and construction of four water quality improvement projects, appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the said amount for the water quality improvement projects and authorizing the expenditure of $269,720.50 from local cash matching funds for the project.
There's no one here to oppose this matter, but Mr. Harris has signed up to speak if he'd like to. Mr. Harris, are you okay? We're glad to hear from you if you'd like.
Yeah, I'll be.
Okay, and then he'll be followed by Joe Cook. Okay. This is Stormwater Funds. All right. Hello, Mr. Harris.
How you doing?
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm here in the state council. I'm here for a good reason. I support what Mr. Smiggle said about the clean air and water, but I don't think Norfolk Southern does. I've been in Lambers Point community for 38 years. I have yet to see anyone from the Norfolk Southern, even in the community, or to a civic league. But yet the residents are steadily eating coal dust day in and day out. You can look on the houses around in there, over there in Lambers Point, you can see where the coal dust is settling in on the houses. I had to wash my house three or four times. I'm 75 years old. I can't afford to pay $150 to have my house cleaned because the dust is coming from the coal cars and ruining it. So we need to do something about it. And you, at councilman, we hold you responsible for doing something. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Harris, I will tell you that Norfolk Southern is going to call you this month because they want to come out to your civic league.
I can put them on schedule for October. That's a book for September.
They want to come out then.
All right.
Mayor Frame, members of the council, my name is Joe Cook. I live at 1147 Story Crescent. I too come today and speak in favor of the city's acceptance of the DEQ grant for $539,000 for water quality improvement. I applaud the city and staff for caring about water quality and meeting regulatory mandates from DEQ and EPA. I only wish that the same concern for air, soil, and water quality was exhibited when it comes to coal dust. But DEQ has chosen to exempt Lambers Point Terminal from the Clean Air Act because it was built before 1972. Since DEQ won't protect us and our property from the toxic coal dust, then the 270 petitioners that you have, who have contacted you and want the city to go on record with the resolution proposed by Councilman Smiggle in June, asking for mitigation measures by Norfolk Southern, then do it on moral and good neighbor grounds. Ask them to do it. That would entail enclosing the dumpers and the conveyors and covering the coal cars, plus getting a community health impact assessment by VDH. If anyone dumped coal dust on your property, you would likely call the police and want them charged with illegal dumping of a hazardous substance. Yet Norfolk Southern dumped 90,000 pounds of coal dust last year on all of us and into the Elizabeth River, which has accumulated over 100 years into millions of tons of coal dust. Now, consider the facts and the scientific evidence on this. The evidence is there, and some people are ignoring it. ODU published a peer-reviewed article in 2007 that found what, just like Mr. Harris said, black grit on cars, window sills, plants, and neighboring communities, it covers it. I know Dr. Webly gets coal dust on her, around her house. I'm sure the mayor does. I do. There, it's pervasive. Soil samples from throughout the city contained up to 20% coal by weight. High coal levels found in soil samples around railroad tracks. Arsenic, which has a carcinogen and a neurotoxin measured at levels in Norfolk at five times higher than background soil concentration nearby. Coal dust contains arsenic, mercury, lead, and other heavy metals, which have been linked to low birth rate, premature birth, neurodevelopmental delays in children, lung cancer, pneumonia, emphysema, bronchitis, asthma attacks, heart disease, and strokes, and premature death. It's all documented in the letter that Mr. Smiggle sent to you, if you would just only read it. Even though Norfolk Southern has known for years of excessive coal dust air pollution from its terminal operation, as documented by its own consultant and repeatedly by DEQ for failing to minimize emissions, it has continued to ignore recommendations from both entities for enclosing the dumpers and putting in a dust collection system. The grandfather clause exemption by DEQ effectively allows unlimited release of coal dust. Also, Norfolk Southern's ambient air monitor next door at HRSD and its claim to comply with EPA standards for a particular matter in general does in no way reflect the toxic content of the particles or actual air quality in nearby neighborhoods, since no independent monitoring and particle testing takes place in those areas. The potential for arsenic poisoning of children nearby exists as a real threat in the contaminated soil at five times normal background levels in those adjacent areas. As such, I come tonight pertaining to you a petition on behalf of the 270 signatories and the 200 people who attended two forums. And unfortunately, I didn't see any of you there at the forum, although Mr. Smiggle did listen to us after the fact. It would be nice to see that some members of the city council come out and go into the neighborhood, go down with Mr. Harris. Come with me. I'll show you coal dust there. And so I ask you to pass the resolution proposed by Councilman Smiggle, and please don't continue to put corporate profits before the environmental health of Norfolk residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Cook. You can call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Webly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Our five.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to negotiate a memorandum of agreement and substantial conformity with the terms and conditions of the attached memorandum of agreement between the city and the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration to conduct dredging services at the terminus of West York Street, adjacent to the Brambleton Avenue Bridge, and authorizing the city manager to accept $750,000 from NOAA to procure such dredging services, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Webly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Our seven.
An ordinance permitting New York fashion organization E. trading as NYFO boutique to encroach eight inches into the right-of-way of West 22nd Street at 322 West 22nd Street with a 60 inches by 17 inches sign, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Webly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Our eight.
An ordinance permitting Pretty Lake at East Beach, Inc. to encroach eight inches plus or minus with Fox Bay bumpouts and three feet plus or minus with roof overhang into a 20-foot drainage easement at 9417, 21, 29, 33, 27th Bay Street, and 9424, 28, 36, and 4026 Bay Street, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Webly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Our nine.
An ordinance permitting TAC acquisitions LLC to encroach into Alney Road right-of-way five feet, six inches, plus or minus with an existing double-sided sign, the bottom of which is 12 feet, four inches above the ground at 776 Granby Street, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Webly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Our 11.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 45355, accepting and appropriating $729,210 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs for the Aid to Localities Program for fiscal year 2014, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Webly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Our 13.
An ordinance approving the conveyance by the city of Virginia Beach to the city of Norfolk of certain property located in the city of Virginia Beach, constituting a weir separating Lake Smith and Little Creek Reservoir, subject to the reservation by the city of Virginia Beach of an easement across the paved portion of the weir property, and authorizing the city manager to accept the deed on behalf of the city of Norfolk.
Mr. James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Jones. My name is Ellis W. James. I reside at 2021 Ken Lake Place here in the city of Norfolk. I did ask some questions about this because I had a little bit of a concern about whether or not there was anything happening that would interfere with our excellent water supply and shallow surface water. The other part of my concern was that I wanted to be sure there was nothing contained in this that would further complicate the desires of the fishermen who have been shoved out of Lake Whitehurst. Now that the boat launch facility is gone, Lake Smith is the last remaining option on the north side of Hampton Roads from the standpoint of where the people who do a lot of fishing can go. And so I'm being, I have been assured that nothing in this particular ordinance interferes with it. It's just simply an easement that's being granted by the city of Virginia Beach to Norfolk. So I just wanted to at least let you know what some of the concerns of the people out in the area were. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Ellis, city council budgeted two years ago money to replace the boat ramp in a different location.
Right.
That's been delayed because of the Dominion Power Transmission Line replacement, and hopefully soon we'll get an update on their status. They just have to complete an underground wiring. I know they're finished with the overhead, but now they're doing underground, and hopefully we can get started soon on that new boat ramp.
Right. Well, thank you for that information. I know there'll be quite a few people who will be pleased to... Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Webly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Our 14.
An ordinance finding a public necessity for the acquisition of permanent easements